John, you ready?
I'm ready.
So I'll open mine first.
Yep. Barbie, you ready?
I am.
All right. I would like to call the Village Council and Planning Board Special Meeting, March 9, 2020, 5:00 PM, Village Hall. I show we have Councilmember Vandenberg and Councilmember Mark Aleese here and both, and myself, obviously. Thanks, Kim, for reminding me. And I show that right now Councilman Epps and Councilman Lean are not here at this time. So I'll turn it over to John to open up his.
All right. I'd like to call the special meeting of the Marvin Planning Board to order. We have a quorum with myself, Michael Lavelle, and Mark Peterson, and Paul.
Calciello.
If it was Smith or Jones or something, it'd be easy. Oh, and someone who's wandering around.
It's a nice.
Kelly Kaye.
Welcome all. I guess I'm going to turn it right over to Plankford since you guys have been wanting to meet with us and we wanted to.
May I adopt the agenda?
Oh, I'll make a motion to, since we can't add or remove anything from the agenda, to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Do we all vote on that?
Yeah.
Is that a joint vote or just?
No, it's not a joint. You all have to approve it.
Yeah, make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So first up on the agenda, then we have the Planning Board's 20,000 goals and priorities.
I'll sort of open this up the way I did at the last Planning Board meeting is I came up with three goals and priorities for the year, and I opened it up and asked everybody else for their thoughts on it. So, you know, my first goal is a real obvious one, is to finish the land use plan. And it's a foregone conclusion, but I think it's, you know, needs restating. We're very close. We, for the actual plan itself, we've got about three, four pages left, and then we've got to redo the executive summary to make it in conjunction with the major, the rest of the document. So it should be coming to the council soon.
How long is it, John?
Huh?
How long is it?
Oh, I haven't.
Fifty pages.
Got it in here.
Fifty?
Down from 180?
Yes.
Nice job, guys. And lady. You can just say, guys. I'll assume I'm included.
And, yeah. And then my second thing, in actually in reading the land use plan, it kept making references to something I wasn't familiar with, and I asked and was told that we had it, and then evidently we don't have. Traffic calming and transportation plan, which I think some of my thunder got stolen at the last council meeting because they've already asked AMT to do some work on Joe Carr Road. But I think we need an overall document plan to incorporate all of these things and, you know, in incorporating PR and G, you know, with their pathway and sidewalk crossings and everything, you know, a comprehensive plan for that.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Yes.
So I had spoken to Chairman Jones about this, and I'm not 100% sure about this statement, but I'm pretty sure we have had discussions about a traffic calming policy, and there have been some verbiage approved, but it's not been in an actual policy format. I think it has been in some other document, and I'm not sure what that document was, and we can continue to do some research.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly.
Years ago.
What I, you know, at least reading through, you know, the references in the land use plan, it sounds like it ought to be a standalone document, you know, that covers and would include, you know, maps and the ordinance and.
Maybe phase one, phase two.
Traffic, you know, traffic calming devices, explanation, or all this, and like I said, you know, I think it will have to be including the PR and G with all of their paths and stuff, you know, so it'd be a pretty concert, to be done right, should be a comprehensive plan.
Right, and I have this actually slated in our projected projects coming up in like April, May timeframe for the council to consider. I will kind of brief them about this tomorrow because I do have some money in the budget for this, that they will discuss tomorrow. So it's definitely in the works, and we haven't lost sight of that, so.
Yeah, you know, I said, you know, it just seemed like something necessary.
We are on it?
Yep.
So is that something that the council will, you know, take charge of, or is that something planning we should be doing, like?
It'll initiate with us, and then it'll more than likely go with you guys to make sure you're okay with it, and as you guys approve or recommend approval, then it'll go back to the council for approval. So it'll be a little bit of a process, but like I said, we have some verbiage that had already been previously discussed, and we're going to take some model policies from other organizations and figure out, you know, what works best for us here.
Okay.
So y'all will see something in the next few months about that.
Good. And then sort of as a follow-up to the land use plan, one reason the current format of the land use plan is substantially shorter is that we took out what was originally listed as Chapter Eight, which was the Village Center Design Guidelines. And, you know, right off the bat, we said, that's not part of the land use plan, that's a standalone document to follow along behind it. So we will have to, you know, that will be our next step in following along after the actual land use plan is that here's a map, maybe, and here's recommendations on design guidelines, et cetera, et cetera, to go along with the Village Center. So.
Can I say something? Is there a question? So that's also something we've got in budget for next year. We have $20,000 in budgeted funds for a consultant for ordinance guidelines for that special district, and that's not something that's been approved, obviously, because it's fiscal year 2021, but hopefully that will be approved, and we will be working on that.
And that hopefully, at the Main Street in North Carolina, in New Bern, that we will, you know, learn a lot of stuff and maybe meet some people who may be able to help us in that regard and stuff. So, you know, it's going to be a very titling conference.
Is that just money for helping to write ordinances, or is that also for a consultant that could come in and kind of help coordinate efforts, like where the storm drains need to go?
So it's kind of up in the air. We talked about a financial consultant to come in and analyze kind of how all of this fits together, and we are hiring a separate financial advisor to look at some of these CIP programs, so that might be something that they can assess. In terms of engineering, I think that's something that we would have to do separately, but with that $20,000 that we've got potentially budgeted, we could split it up into different projects, for sure.
Can I speak to that also? So the way I've heard the desire for this project is that Village of Marvin would be responsible for only very common infrastructure, like at a very high level, and the developers would be responsible for the vast majority of the actual development. So they'd be the ones getting the engineering, like where are the storm drain going type of questions, whereas we would be only interested in like the zoning regulation, like from a higher level perspective, how much density can you have, and how far setback should they be. So those are the things that we can look at, and I think we could do that in-house mostly, but if there are parts that we can't, that's what that money's budgeted for.
Okay. I think my main concern was really in this older strip here with all of these like piecemeal pieces, like if you're trying to tie those together and they become commercial, you know, how do you even, where does the parking go for all this existing?
Well, that's, you know, part of that plan, like is, as I've referred to many times, that 10,000-foot master plan, you know, not a detailed engineering drawing, but, you know, here's an overall concept, kind of, you know.
I think we don't know what we don't know.
Yeah.
You guys going to this meeting tomorrow, I think one of the important questions is, you know, who, beyond government and the landowners, who should we be getting involved in this process because we need some direction? Nobody here has ever created a town hall from, or town center, area, district from scratch, so we need to surround ourselves by experts.
Yeah.
You know, whether it's going to cost, but there, I mean, there should be some partnership in some of this, and I don't mean that in a government, private ownership, but somehow getting 12 to 13 different landowners on the same page and with our vision and stuff. And maybe some don't do anything, but there's a spot, there's a placeholder for them while other landowners that do go along with it, you know, move things forward and stuff, so.
That's exactly the idea, because there are certain people who live in their house currently, and we want to be able to develop a plan that can be developed by individuals who are ready to develop while still allowing those other people to stay in their houses for some time.
I just think it would be helpful to know, for those who want to develop in this little section right here, what infrastructure is already in place, and then what would need to be added to handle a commercial piece of property? And if it's not there, then how do you coordinate with all these individual landowners when they're developing their own piece of land if they have to put in certain pieces of infrastructure? But, you know, I don't know, I can't get.
I think there are companies out there that do that, that would definitely help us and lead us with that, and that's where I've said from the beginning, you know, I mean, we've probably got one shot at this, and, you know, we got to do it right, especially if not everybody's on board at the same time. How do you piecemeal this until you eventually see in maybe 15, 20 years where everybody gets on board or whatever, and you have a kind of.
And this is, you know, it's going to be interesting to bring a gut this week down there. You know, you've heard about, you know, all of these historic downtown districts, you know, whether it be Waxall, or Matthews, or New Bern, or all these places, but they had something to start with. It might have been all wore out, but they had something to start with. We are basically starting with, other than the historic structures and stuff, we're starting with nothing, with a clean slate, so it's going to be, it's going to be different.
Well, almost worse than a clean slate, because it's not just a flat piece of land we've got existing. You know what I mean? Like, there are a lot of workarounds, so.
Anyway, but, and so, you know, that's part of the learning curve that we've got to find out about is, and hopefully we'll come away with a lot of, if not direct knowledge, at least this person can help us, and this person can help us, and that, you know, and some of them may be the Main Street, North Carolina, you know, agency, and some of them may be Joe Blow developer who did, you know, Western wherever, but.
What I would like to have is a professional consultant who's got our interests at heart, right? That we could consult with, and I'll say in private, I don't even know if that's allowable, we'd have to figure that out yet, but consult in private to find out, is this ask realistic? Like, can we ask for this and get this, or will we be killing the economics of it so that nobody would go along? I need that kind of help because I don't have that kind of experience. I know what I want, but I don't know if it's realistic or possible and that sort of thing. And then back to the private question is, to have to do this in a public meeting where the developer's sitting right there, it seems like the deck is stacked against us in that regard. There's got to be a better way to have those kinds of conversations among the planning board and say, all right, let's jointly ask for X before you do it right in front of the person where they already know what your negotiating strategy is, if you follow that.
Are we allowed to go in a closed session? Is the planning board allowed to go in a closed session to discuss something like that?
Or is there a way to get there?
We're not showing our cards.
I don't think you can, especially when you're talking about, you know.
Economic development, you can't, Kate, or I can't say you can. Let me go pull the statute out. We can. I don't know.
I don't know an advisory board that is able to do that, but I can find that out.
Remember, they said it was very rare, that workshop we went to, they said it's very rare that a planning board can go into closed session.
Yeah. But so are there other ways to get to the same place? Like, okay, two of us get together first, then meet with two others, and so on, right? Because we can't have a planning board quarterly, right? I'm just asking.
That would be, I think, a great question, because there have been numerous towns that we've all gone into, and it's like, how did they get this, how did they get this to this spot that, and how they, I would think that would be another good question, is like, how do you negotiate where you get the people that are supposed to be on your side going to bat for you, but, you know, before you get to that negotiating table?
It's going to be, I look forward to it, be a great learning experience.
Oh, actually, so.
So is this Main Street USA group, do they offer like public funding, like do they have like grants and stuff that?
Don't know.
Well, what?
We do know that they have grants, though.
Well, it is, Bob has on numerous occasions referred to the.
Well, it's the National.
The National Historic.
Trust for Historic Preservation.
Okay.
So the National Main Street program is the direction under that that helps, it's kind of like a double armed thing.
It's the, it's the local or state level of that.
Yeah.
Or state part of that.
So I feel like that if they're out there, then they would help with planning and funding and.
They do, they do, these grants. I have a situation, I observed from afar right now, that, you know, I had moved many years ago from Logan, Utah, and they had an example of, there's a building, a very historic building, it's in the center of the block, opposite the tabernacle, and on, right in downtown Logan. And it was occupied, they took it and they occupied it with a lot of businesses, restaurants and that sort of thing. Well, now, what's happened is the main owner of it that ran a restaurant left to go build a hotel down the street in a conference center. So it's now left, and he sold it to the city. So what's happened is, is that the city is trying to figure out, what do we do with this thing? And, you know, like with any downtown, they were looking at putting in a parking garage. And what they have found is that if they build a huge parking garage and take up all the spaces and back behind it, they're only going to gain two parking spaces. Now, there is a developer, it's called Cowboy Partners, you can look it up. Cowboy Partners is a development company that actually is coming in and wanting to make it a lot of things inside. They even want to make it a roller skate rink on one end of this thing, okay? And what's interesting to read from the newspapers is to watch what's happening as it jostles from the council to the public, because the public then gets invited to these huge forums, and after the developer kind of proposes their plan, then the public gives their input of whether they want to see this or not. So it's become quite a tossed ball. It isn't just a city council, it's not just the mayor, it's not, it's, or even the developer, it's like the public's involved in it too, and they're telling, do we want this, do we not? Well, the National Trust for Historic Preservation stepped in and said that this is not, and it almost sounds like it's a nanny kind of state sort of thing, but they come in and they go, you know, this, you're part of the Main Street program, this isn't making something like this historic. In other words, all you've got is a facade, but if you're making it a circus inside, that's not kind of what we would like to see. So it's almost like I'm reading the newspaper, they're back to the drawing board again of like, well, what do we put in this thing, and how do we fashion it? Does that make sense? That all makes sense. It's, it's an involved deal. It involves everybody.
At least our survey didn't have a skating rink on it.
What's wrong with the skating?
The carpet, carpeted, you know, rally.
Are we saying one of the goals and priorities then is to allocate budget and get this person who works on our behalf and the echo pulse comes, we can use their expertise to see what's in our interests, not necessarily what's in the landowner's interest? Is that how we're coming back to a goal and priority?
I don't think the budget, the budget's not in ours, but would, attending this conference and trying to find some assistance be part of our goal?
You'll find it.
Yeah, that's, you know, and it actually came up.
No, that's not what I'm asking.
Oh, sorry, I thought you said.
I was trying to tie the whole discussion back into what is the goal and priority that we're establishing here with this discussion for 2020.
Yeah, you're asking, would, paraphrase it or rephrase it, is the council open to having a budget that would pay for a consultant that would come in and?
In our last meeting, we talked a little bit about, when can we just see something to start shooting holes in it and go, this is absolutely impossible? I just think there's too many unknown unknowns.
Yeah.
We've got to turn it into known unknowns with some. Is that what you said you had money for? Some expertise.
So, and I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, we had budgeted $20,000 to do with the village in our district, and a lot of that was for economic consultant and a.
Complication.
Exactly.
The what?
So we can.
Complication.
Rewrite.
Yeah, the thing that I didn't have the confidence to do in-house was to actually develop the ordinance, the zoning district.
So to answer your question, we can earmark that for an economic consultant or expert.
So there's money, it's just not allocated correctly, or it's not allocated right now.
And it may be in there that way, I just don't have the budget here in front of me.
And we, you know, right this, this evening, I don't know that we've got that knowledge, but maybe by Wednesday evening we'll have more knowledge that we can, you know, we can come back and say.
Well, Mars, our budgetary session and stuff like that.
This is what we.
We've got until June or May, I think.
This is what we learned, and this is what it looks like we need to be doing.
And along, I'll just interject, she just handed this, closed sessions are permitted purposes, policy of the state, closed sessions shall be held with, held only when required to permit a public body to act in the public interest as permitted in this section. A public body may hold a closed session and exclude the public only when a closed session is required. So it's basically saying, you guys are a public body, so you can hold your own closed session, should we get a consultant that we want to discuss things and how we proceed and what's in our best interest before we send it out to the, you know, the developer or something like that, so it should be there, so.
Can I ask a question about the budget line item?
Yes.
Is there a way to make it more generic until we understand what the first, the first part of process is? Like, I would imagine writing the ordinances is not the first step, so is there a way to kind of?
Yeah, we have it in the generic line item that says consultant, and then we put notes in there so we can, you know, kind of in our head, remember what that was for, and so we have it in there now for economic consultant and ordinance writing, but that doesn't mean that's what we're going to do. We won't know that for sure until we are F B it.
Okay.
So we can go through that process a little bit later, but it is earmarked there for just general consultant.
Okay. So maybe that's something that as a planning board and with your guidance, we can discuss just as, if there's, if there's need for that money for step one or two, that we can use it for, for that.
Sure. Let me make a note for the minutes, Chris Smith, planning board member, has joined us at 5:24. Now, those were my comments, and there were several other comments from board members last month, and obviously didn't do a good job of writing those down. I'll open it up to the others who, you know, because there were a couple of good ones.
Yeah, I've written them down, if you want me to read them out. The other, there's three others, which are trail network and connectivity improvement. Another one says lights along thoroughfares and finds the costs for them, and finally address flooding issues on state roads. But regarding the last two, I found out from Lee Ainsworth that we don't need a resolution to send maintenance requests and speed study requests anymore. We can just get them from staff. Of course, I will get your direction to do that, but we don't need the whole process of a resolution.
What was after trail network?
Lights along thoroughfares, like street lighting.
So where, like up in Mount Marvin, up in downtown?
That's what one member.
Joe Carr.
I think it's also, I think it was also in response to the accident, just safety in general.
Okay, which we've been talking about with council, working on crosswalks and lights and getting traffic studies with DOT, so.
We spoke about the lights, the new lights on Marvin Road before Marvin, I guess Charlotte put those up, we weren't sure. And then if there was a continuation process, because all they did was put them on the utility poles, they just put the lights right on the utility poles.
Yeah, which we've, at which we have worked on the two roundabouts, putting lights on the utility poles there. Are they up yet?
No, they're not.
So.
How did you go about doing that? What was the process?
It was a process, and we got it approved, and we paid for it, and now we're just waiting for it to be done.
We haven't paid for it yet.
Well, we approved the funds.
We did approve it, the funds, and we had to do a lighting plan, then we've gone back and forth with the power company and CDOT to get all this approval done, and they're still having some issues we're trying to iron out.
So even though they're state roads, we have to pay for them?
Yeah. That's crazy.
Anything above the minimum is not their responsibility.
Well, there's no minimum.
How long do it say?
It's zero.
Right, we at least, that's.
So what is the minimum, then?
Your headlights on your car.
Yeah. Unfortunately.
What, how many lights did we add?
Nine, I think it was.
I think we also talked about the crosswalk, right? What do they call it, there's a name for it?
Pedestrian refuge.
Refuge, yeah.
Yeah.
Pedestrian refuge, that putting that potentially along maybe two spots on Joe Carr.
Well, that's where I think that part of that traffic.
You may, by doing that, you may eliminate the need for lighting, I mean, I don't know, I mean, if the issue with lighting is that important for that area or not, I'm not clear about because of, you know, I mean, I know they lit up down Marvin Road, but I'm not sure if it's, you know, I know we had an accident there, but we don't know the, all the details of that and why that accident happened. But if there's a need for it and the community wants it, we do it, but I think you're going to get, just by putting those pedestrian refuges in, you're going to have people slow down. They're going to have to, because there's going to be a sort of a median in between, and you can't necessarily go flying through those things, so.
Yeah, I think that.
I know people will.
Well, you should.
Well, I know you shouldn't, but it tends to slow things down when you put the median.
The speeds I've seen people entering the double roundabout have just been shocking. Okay, so back to my question that I was trying to ask, how many did we add, and what was the cost of those?
So it was around eight or nine, and it was $2,500 a year.
Okay. A year in electricity?
Well, who put the actual lights up?
Union Power.
Okay, so we're only paying for the electricity.
Yes.
Well, they charge you rent, that's what, you know.
And then we get to pick the look of it, correct?
That's a, that's a big number, 2,500 a year.
For 12?
Well, wait, wait, wait. Hold on a second.
Come on, nice.
So if we're trying to create a feel and a look here, we don't have a say on what the lights look like.
But that's just, that's like up on the utility poles, that would not be like our.
A lower tier.
A lower tier.
Yeah, I can do that.
Kind of really.
I mean, is that, you got, it could be an issue if someone has a problem with that.
Yeah.
I know we were, we did the same thing in our neighborhood, that we eventually got to pick.
We got decorative lights.
Right.
And most neighborhoods have decorative lights, but the ones on Marvin are not decorative at all.
No, they're on the.
They're the standard issue.
I agree, but is that?
And that's what the question is, well.
But that's like at the roundabout, like if we, like once we develop, if we develop this area, then we will have like the lighting package of what's acceptable, and then you would have like.
Yeah, you would have that there, but not at the roundabouts.
Well, you could have it at the roundabout, they just wouldn't be up on the poles, it would be around the roundabouts. There's no point in doing that now because it doesn't give off.
So you have the same lights that are up there, same standard issue.
Unless, unless Union Power changed them, which I highly doubt, but.
Well, that wouldn't be Union Power down there, though, in Charlotte.
Yes, well, if Union Power trucks put those lights up, because I saw them out there physically working.
In Charlotte.
Over there across the creek, it was Union Power trucks.
They used those bright white 5,000 Kelvin lights?
LEDs?
Yeah.
They're like silver.
Yeah, big old, silver orange. Real skinny it looks like, yeah.
John, did you say they put them on the utility poles right outside of Innisbrock?
Yeah, there's a couple of lights there, and you still haven't noticed them?
No.
Yeah.
So they're not that bright?
Right there at your entrance.
Okay. Well, I mean, if it's something that you guys feel like it's important, I mean, we can look into it, but we're going to need to know, like, where do you guys want them? Like, where?
Well, they're on the poles, on the poles on Marvin Road.
What street, I know.
Marvin Road.
Just Marvin Road.
For now.
Just up.
So he can get to his neighborhood.
You better go all the way to Newtown. You better, you better go past Firethorne. Just the optics.
Just the optics of it.
But really, this, this meeting is, these are our thoughts. Now you tell us what you want us to do. Right? Because we do what you tell us.
Well, we try.
Well, I, I was, I was in agreement that the, the, the first and foremost is finishing the land use plan. So I think that it doesn't sound like we're far away from that.
Another year or so.
The, the other concern I had, and this was way back before maybe some of you were even on the board here or on the council, is that the, the ordinance themselves conflict. And we talked about that at the last meeting to be put in the budget, that we were going to have someone relooking. Because at one point, we had our own attorney do it and rewrite it, clean it up. So we wouldn't get in any trouble with, you know, anyone as far as conflicts go. And then that was challenged by some individuals and then, uh, which led to the councilmen getting involved in writing ordinances that they have no business doing. And so it never got done. However, we spent about $40,000, I think we budgeted for it, which never went anywhere. So somewhere, there's a, an area where they were looking at all the different things. I think you've recognized it, Rohit, you've mentioned it. But that, that has always been top on my list as far as for this town to just clean up. So we know we're not conflicting and it's, it's easy after they read the land use plan, they can go and look at the ordinances and see if.
That's being done, check.
So we're currently doing that now and also as you are probably aware, 160D is going to come into implementation as of January 1st. So the consultant that we're hiring to kind of clean up some of this stuff is also going to address some of the 160D as well. And y'all will have a lot to do with that when that point gets here. We actually, I think we have, we have on the agenda to approve the contract tomorrow. And so once that happens, it'll be quick, quick, quick.
Trails obviously was another high for me priority of completing the connectivity for.
So that, that was also my biggest one, I felt like that we could make an immediate impact.
It's been the biggest ask since I've been in this.
So, but what, like what are the action steps that had to occur that haven't occurred for us to have more connected trails? Do we have to acquire right of way? Do we have to acquire land? Do we have to get permission from the state of the DOT?
I think it's a little bit of.
All of the above.
Financial is number one. What are we, what resources are we putting towards that to make that happen? But that's definitely one part of it. Are we giving the budget it deserves?
So how much trail do we have and how much do we spend? Like what does it cost a mile? What does it cost? Do we have any notion of what it costs to do this?
It depends on the type of trail. Some of them are natural, some of them are paved. Some of them are free because developers put them in, so.
That's true, yes. Who, now does the, is the, is it PRG?
PR and G.
PR and G. Do they, do they own that? Do they kind of?
Yeah.
They, yeah.
Right.
The CIP, the schedule.
The master plan.
They own the master plan, so I mean, I don't even know is that even us.
Well, I mean, that would be good to know, just admit as a government, we can't do it. I mean, we quit talking about it then.
No, we're doing it. You just approve.
Parks Recreation and.
Greenway take care of it. Our parks are in Greenway.
They take care of it.
It's, it's their, it's their baby. It's their baby. They're, they're the ones that have the, where potential trails could be or are established already. It's just putting.
And what is it?
Finances towards it and sometimes it's an easement issue.
So we've had maps like here's a future.
Rohit's, Rohit's.
Do we have a future trail area?
Yes.
Rohit's going to get it right now. So you guys will see it.
And just, just so you know, every year the process, how it work, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you, Kelly?
No.
Okay. The, um, the process is they, they have their, their map that you're getting ready to see. We put that into a capital improvement project plan, which is what you see here.
Just stick it over there. I don't need.
We have a dollar amount that's associated with each, with each tree that you're going to see. And we basically project out what year we're going to do that.
Yeah.
So over the next five years, we have a total of $1 million in projects for greenways and trails.
You said one, one million?
One billion.
Now, that, that is, that is, that is.
No, I heard million, but it sounded.
That's assuming all of it gets done within that timeframe.
And that's assuming that it all gets approved and we get all the easements and which probably won't happen.
That, that's not an approved documented.
So can I ask, so the point Mark was making, even though we might not be building these and sometimes builders, developers put them in, we have to maintain them once they're in, right?
Correct.
Does anybody know what we're spending a year maintaining our existing infrastructure here?
We have, we do have line items within our budget. A lot of that's absorbed within the parks operating budget. But we, we actually do have a, a line item in the capital. And I didn't bring that information, so I'm not fully prepared to answer that question, but I.
Okay, and then did I understand you to say just a moment ago that roughly $200,000 a year is available for?
Not available.
Okay, what was the term then?
It's planned.
Okay, planned meaning it's an aspirational goal.
They're asking for it. That's not me, they're going to get it.
That's right. Okay.
Rich list.
So, so for instance, if a tree falls down over by the school where the path is.
Right.
We'll get a notification of it. We'll let our, our parks person, we'll notify him. He usually probably most likely takes care. And then they'll do, they'll basically do like walkthroughs of the paths and see if repairs need to be made, patches, that kind of stuff that we determine. So that, that's kind of all inclusive in that, if I'm not mistaken. That's how that's, that's done as far as the, the cost. So I, I don't know if there's a budget for actual identified, because each neighborhood has their own thing and everything's a little bit different.
I can try to get a note for you. It may not.
I was curious one, but I think again, the point I think was, you know, these, the best way to get this done is to have developers do it for you, right? And then, and then you pay to maintain it. But, so we haven't had a lot of development in the last few years to add to this network. I think that's.
But, but also this was never part of the, it was never, my understanding, when developers were here years ago, that wasn't part of their agreement. It's now these last few developments that you've seen, like Amber Meadows is one that has gone in and this, this other one that'll go in. They'll be required to do their share. Amber Meadows actually, my understanding, had to go back and actually make it a walkable trail because we actually walk.
They gave us money to fix it.
They gave us money to fix it.
Up to our standards. But, but some of the developers aren't building them. They are giving us fee and loo money so that we can build it with.
It's up to us to get it done.
Based on the standards that are.
Refresh my memory, and this may be staff question, can we use power bill funds for this?
Yes.
For trails?
Yeah.
I'll have to look into that.
Like the sidewalk trail.
Yeah, the sidewalks, yes.
So, so was your point though a moment ago is that we have some projects and arrears that we'd like to do with the money that was provided?
We, we have, we have put the fee and loo money that we have available to use, I believe, in this upcoming year. Is that right, Christine?
Correct, and this, and the one that's coming up.
Uh, yes. No, no, the 20, 21.
We have it, we have it in the capital project fund, which is kind of like a savings account for a specific purpose. And that is in, actually, no, I'm wrong. We actually, you're right. We did appropriate the 42,000 for the, or we're going to for this year.
For the park.
Yes, so yeah, that's the only.
But back to a point that was made earlier, it's the PRNG that's going to oversee this anyway. It's not a planning board thing.
No, you guys, I mean, I'm glad that you guys are interested and you guys need to see it and see that they are working towards the connectivity. But they are, that is.
Is that what this blue means?
I go through them all the time and get, and get into, I go from here and travel through there, into there. But I think it almost looks like there are some people who live right here.
Trails, network and connectivity. That was the third and the fourth thing was lights.
That's the issue with this segment here, execute on this probably depending on them allowing us to do it. And so the alternate would be.
And then the fifth one.
So they're not allowing us to connect into the.
Flooding, not currently allowed.
They put a gate, they put a gate.
They got two foot, we have to do the road, but if you're in.
Well, these guys put the gate there.
Yeah, they put one there and there. So this is the only completed portion, is that right?
Right, there is also the chimneys trail here, but that's not what we built. Part of the preserve is just about getting complete. Amber Meadows and Tullamore Trails are about to be built very soon. They were just approved like last meeting, basically contracts.
Providence Road should have, what, what's the, what did we agree on?
Eight feet.
Eight feet sidewalks will be all along Providence Road, which isn't here right now, right?
Right.
So, so the trail includes sidewalks?
Yes.
Yes.
So to answer your question, I pulled the statute up real fast and it specifically says power bill funds can be, and I'm abbreviating here, can be used for street resurfacing, you know, all that good stuff. It also says, or for the planning, construction and maintenance of bikeways, greenways or sidewalks.
There you go.
Okay. So what did the red dots mean? Because I don't see that on the legend.
Those were often.
I think, yeah, I think they're just, it's just a way to say that these are proposed.
They're proposed?
Yeah.
Okay, so you can, you basically can take this route or this route to get.
Right.
I think, I think it depends on easements and which one you can.
Because this is in a power line easement and we'd have to negotiate with the power company. And this is on Bonds Grove Church. We'd have to negotiate with individual property owners that are not in Marvin. So it depends on whichever we can get.
Is the power company usually agree with that or do they have a problem?
It would seem possible. It takes a long time.
Yeah, but it seemed like it'd be, you're talking about one person instead of.
Yes, that's true.
And they establish.
Bell Grove.
It's cheaper. Because you wouldn't have to take down a bunch of trees, you know, clear brush.
It's already a maintained path or some stuff. You just got light poles on it.
So I'm of the view, I mean, as far as my priorities were land use plan, obviously the trail networks completed and the cleaning up of the existing ordinances were my, my, if you wanted a top three.
So this is something we're doing internally. This is something we're trying to do. We're not.
PR and G.
We're not subbing this out.
This is not out there and not being done. This is being addressed and I think our meeting.
So we don't give you a role.
It's not, I don't think, yeah, I don't think it's a.
It's good to know where they are, but.
Okay, so we don't need to make it one of our priorities.
It's one of their top priorities, is that right?
Yes.
But it's not, is it their priority?
So let me ask you this, now that we all have the land use plan of everything's things, what did you guys think about? Do you have any comments or things that stood out to you guys with the, the survey that was done? When we, it, it was completed based on what?
You mean surprises?
Well, surprises are just like, you know.
Many times.
I think most people were concerned about traffic. That just seemed to be the top.
It was amazing that people wanted the tax hike.
Yeah.
You know, just to get another option, which we're going to be talking, I think Thursday, more about that and stuff, so. But I, I just found it, you know, I mean, not surprising, but.
Yeah, you know, I didn't see any great, you know, that was, you know, I didn't see a whole lot of resistance to tax, to the tax increases for all the options that were given. Security, trash.
Traffic officer.
Yeah, traffic officer, and it just went. But, but there wasn't much resistance at all to, to that, which, you know, that probably would, might have been surprising, most surprising.
And just out of curiosity, it's not necessarily off topic, but any update on that third roundabout? And once that goes, then we get another, what, $50,000 into the budget?
No, that's not on the agenda. You can't really talk about the roundabout.
No, but it's, but more money comes into the budget once that gets completed though for.
I understand that, but that's not, that's not a topic on the agenda.
John, did we talk about branding at all in our last meeting in terms of a project for us?
You, you guys have something working in that, don't you?
I think we did.
Branding.
Yeah.
Signs, welcome to Marvin.
Wayfinding, would you?
I'm sorry?
Wayfinding signs, signage?
Like directional? Is that what you mean by right?
Yeah, it would incorporate branding as far as our logo and the community feel. But if you're talking about like a rebranding initiative, taking, taking this away and doing something else with it, is that?
No, just to, you know, just.
Welcome to Marvin.
Well, we, we, we've talked about addressing each street. If you are in, in Marvin and your street sign having some sort of identification type thing that's attached to the post, whether it be below it or above the street sign saying that people, the medallion with this.
We're going to change the whole street sign.
But you've had branding professionals in front of the council and talk about it, have you not?
Yes.
Oh, here, this is.
Just a yes.
Yes, we have.
I guess that was my question, right?
That was the latest proposal. Okay, then to the branding, we, we haven't talked to a branding company yet. Which company?
So I think you might be talking about wayfinding signage. If you're talking about kind of this is, this is Marvin, welcome to Marvin. This is a community feel. This is, you know, you're constantly seeing the branding of our logo and what we determined to be our community thing. We are, we are doing, like those are going to be in the budget for next year.
Because that's in our specs manual for.
And we will be requiring all developers moving forward to.
What about all neighborhoods?
Yeah, if they're in our street system, yes.
Okay, you would pay for it.
Yes.
We're, we're working some initiatives now.
Maybe talk to some of the homeowners and see if they want to partner up.
The point I think I was making is I think there is some confusion as to what is Marvin and what is not.
Sure.
Right, there's a lot of.
Confused about what's Marvin.
And so, so some effort to try and help people understand that's not Marvin, this is.
I mean, street signs that are in Marvin would be helpful, but I don't think you can say like, welcome to Marvin. And then it's like, thanks for coming. Oh, welcome to Marvin again.
I think at certain, at certain points, like just beyond where the swimming pool place is, changing the size that we have currently on Waxaw Marvin Road that heads out towards Waxaw when you're coming through the development, it's just a small sign that, I mean, does it say population or is it just say, welcome to Marvin? It's just a D E sign that I, we all talked about changing.
Same with the one dot creek on Marvin Road.
So, I mean, I, I mean, I do think that is, would be good. And I know that Union County had talked about way, wayfinding signs and that was going to be a big priority for them. They have since pushed that way down on their list of priorities. So we were kind of trying to piggyback off with them to kind of work in conjunction. But I do think that that would be like maybe a good, you know, project to take a look at.
It, it seems acute for us because even planning board members don't know that's not Marvin or that is, you know.
It's very, it's very, it's very difficult.
Yeah, we'd have, we'd have a fortune in welcome to Marvin, thankful visiting Marvin signs.
Yeah. But yeah, I mean, I think that that would be something good. And then you can always, like, as we're putting the signs out, you can, we can always have, you know, that we're a national wildlife federation community, you know, that, that marshes done, you know.
DMT will actually, they, they, unless you put your logos on the welcome to your limit, your corporate limit signs, you can actually put your logos on there. That, I mean, they'll charge you to do it. It's not corporately bad, but we.
Yeah, but that's good, that's good though.
We can look into that for sure.
But is, is it in the ordinance right now for the developer, say the new 70-some homes that may go in?
Yes.
And they're going to put that street sign in that will be, that they have to get that particular.
So anything new will be, like the logo on it, all right, good.
And as we, I think the process in getting these street signs, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is we have been improving their streets and then there's a process till we officially take it over. Once DOT has done all the work that they said they were going to do on, it's up to our standards. And once they turn it over to us, then we would move forward with the signs on for street signs.
Is that a planning board, is that involved issue? Is that a priority? Like, I, I guess I just wonder, we've got 10 minutes left and I still don't feel like I have one priority for the planning board for the year that I know of. That I'm not being critical, that we need to work on. My meetings should be organized around these priorities, right?
I give you my three, so.
Yeah, the land use.
But the trails isn't us, so we should.
Ordnance cleanup would be us.
So ordinance cleanup and, and finish up the. So we should not be working on anything else till we finish those.
Right, and then I think once those are finished and especially with whatever information they come back with from tomorrow and Wednesday. Then we can get some more direction for working on this, you know.
Episode.
Yeah. Because I think, I mean, I, that's, I mean, that's what you guys, that's the planning.
Well, yeah, because embedded in that, in the land use plan, it's this whole, you know, what do we say about the village center? What, what is saying, we might say it, but it's completely impossible and ridiculous. We just don't know that yet.
And you guys aren't any more involved in Marvin Gardens. You haven't heard, I mean, from this, you have no issues there, right?
Nothing new on that.
There shouldn't be.
They haven't sent that zoning text change.
Okay.
Oh, on the.
No, I don't think they'll be ready for next planning board meeting.
For the, the gas station?
Yeah, yeah, they haven't said that, yeah.
So we.
Were they good with that?
They're going to apply, they haven't applied.
So just for the record, on, in a, at our meeting, we, we allowed, I think, two more stations.
Or you were, you were open to that.
We were open to it. We didn't approve it. We were open to it.
To, to listening to that.
Yes, yeah. It was a company looking at that particular property to act as a gas station slash convenience. I think they had an issue with times of days as well as they needed, I think, at least two more stations of gas. If we were open to that, I think we.
On, along Providence?
Right at Marvin Gardens. It is zone for a, one gas station. It's like small convenience store just, and that would be on Newtown Road. That would be the access point.
Will.
I think there were eight initially.
There's eight stations, so four.
16.
Pumps. No, 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 no.
No. Like a total of eight?
Yeah, so they're asking for a total of...
Eight, eight hoses or something.
Yeah, they're asking for a total of...
So at each, at each pump, there's a hose.
At each station, you can do one on each side, yes. So, so we, we, I think we added only two, or we were open to only two.
Yeah.
And not, and not twenty-four hours.
And we weren't, yeah, I think...
So from the street, how many pumps?
Can't remember.
Can't, yeah, I can't remember either.
Let's go back in a minute or like that, what that was.
It was, it was two more than what's on the plan.
Four pumps and it was two stations with each pump.
You'll see that come true for you guys too.
We, we looked it up and Jamie had said, you know, the one over at Blakeney looks good. That's in the approved document. That, that convenience store is the example.
Oh, it is, yeah.
The photos in the, in the approved document are that convenience store.
And that's the one by, uh, Blakeney where the tunnel's...
Yeah, see the, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. And that's hidden pretty well.
Yeah.
So...
Well, I thought it was interesting, you know, he, he made mention of it and then wrote, pulled the document out and that's the example.
So just to give you the context, they came for a pre-application meeting regarding the seven eleven. But yes, this is not on the agenda. We need to stay on topic.
So other, the, the parcel that is on Providence where they initially came in and talked about rezoning, is that going to be a project we're likely to see in twenty twenty? Does anyone know if that?
Oh, yes. That's, that's a good point.
Not on the agenda.
At this point...
Well, it, it is because it could be a vote.
That's actually part of our land use plan, so it's good to discuss. At the last council meeting or a couple, yeah, last...
It was at the work session.
Yeah, a work session. They came for a pre-application meeting and the council left it up to the planning board to decide whether that parcel should remain on the future land use plan as a commercial, uh, potential parcel. And that was up to the planning board to discuss, to bring it up at...
Okay, so it's, it's coming back to us for another discussion.
To, to see if we actually want to make it commercial or not, because right now it is not zoned commercial.
Right, and...
Somehow it ended up on maybe possibly on that map. And that's the thing I went on.
It ended up on a map that they looked at that was never approved and they went with that and started their whole process, which created where we're at today.
Okay.
Actually, I did find that that map was discussed and approved by the planning board in March of twenty seventeen. A couple of you were actually there at that meeting.
Could it be?
It was years ago, but...
So likely in one of our next meetings, we're going to be asked to rediscuss that map?
Maybe not the next coming meeting because you guys wanted to talk about the village center alone, but probably a subsequent meeting.
Anything else from the council for us? You know, that's, obviously that's going to be something for us from the council. You, you kicked it back to us, so...
Yeah. Well, we've also got the, what, twenty-five year plan, the twenty...
Yeah, that's something that hasn't been mentioned yet. Um, so as part of 160D, all municipalities have to adopt a comprehensive plan, which we don't have. It's basically a vision for what Marvin will look like in the future. And I've been saving that for last because what Village Center looks like is going to be a huge part of what our comp plan looks like. Um, but, so that's, that's last. Uh, we got our land use plan, then Village Center, then comp plan. And I'm looking at the schedule for that to be like June, July, August timeframe.
So then that's like perfect. So you guys have plenty to work on.
Refresh my memory on the, the conditional use permits for the pools. What happened there?
Uh, you decided that, no action would be needed.
Okay, so that will continue. We still want to say, so you will still see CUPs come through for pools in those unique situations. We would like you to get a set of eyes on it as well as a blessing from the council, if you will. So usually they're able to work, work their, work through those issues. But that was the only thing that related to, that I can remember to. Anything else, Bob or Kim?
I, I do have a question about, um, so the, the sketch that you showed us at the last planning board meeting that we're going to be talking about at our next meeting with possible locations for the village hall. Sorry. Before we tackle the village center, we kind of need to know where the town hall is going to be. So I know there's been some discussion about it not being in the current site. So has there been any movement? Do we know what's happening, what's not happening?
We don't have anything definitive yet.
Yeah, there's, there's a few things going along at the same time. That's not necessarily no and on the corner, but we did take the sign down from there because it wasn't, but there, we are looking at other options and including, um, still here with the, with the town. And that was discussed in, in, was it the work session?
Yep.
Yeah. Um, so I think there's three or four options right now that we've explored or are still exploring that have not necessarily, but I think that we should know some things fairly short on, on some.
And are they such that even if you do use one of those options, maybe there's a town center go around it, maybe not? Maybe it's a good placement regardless of whether a town center or...
Yeah, one of the unique things that was open that I think we can say, because it was in public, uh, in the public meeting, right? We can talk about what this place said. They're actually interested, they, they're open to the idea of a long-term lease, however that looks like, and it's a win-win. But moving, knocking this building down and moving it that way, all the way closer to the...
Church?
Church, yes. So there's probably one or two trees that we would have to knock down to make that happen. And then this would be a, a cleared space because they own all the way...
They own all the way to the next church.
All the way to the next church. So they, they had, they liked the idea of the long-term lease. They didn't necessarily, and here's the benefit of that that kind of got us...
Like building the village cent, I mean, village hall, I mean, village hall here? Oh, wow, okay.
Yes, but knocking this down, but the great thing about, not here.
On this property, on this three acre property.
On this, this is a three acre property. So if you go all the way to the end and that's not what the rest, it's far down close to that. But the ideal, the, the good news about that is if that were to go through, we could essentially stay here until that building was complete. We don't have to move. And then once we do move in that building and we have the water lines and sewer lines, which is another issue, that would tie in that way. Um, once we, once we do get that, then we would, um, we would pay to knock this building down. So this building that we're in right now would go away.
This is related to land acquisition or some...
Was that your...
No, I don't know that.
Did they have to burn it down?
No, that wasn't related to the land acquisition. No, no, no. Because we were looking at other properties. I think we were looking at other properties for potential purchases for the, for town hall and stuff. So there were a few, few that came to us and opened it up and said, so we, we looked at. But I don't, I don't know where that's at because it hasn't been decided yet.
So would it be a redesign of the building?
I think the building itself would be...
This is getting into talking about village hall and not talking about specifically land